...the order, start with the flag.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, an interior public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence to remember the service and sacrifices of the armed service members who protect our nation and the first responders who protect our neighborhoods. Please take a roll.
Councilman Quinn?
Here.
Councilman Friedlander?
Here.
Councilman Brooks?
Here.
Councilman Noon?
Yeah, here.
Councilman Saulberg?
Here.
Councilman Brooks?
Here.
Councilwoman Walshask, sorry.
Wytovich.
Wytovich.
Here.
Councilman Sackett?
Here.
Councilman Kritz, Council President Kritz.
Here. Notice of this meeting was sent to the Daily Record and the Star Ledger, the official newspapers for the township of Rockaway on April 6th, 2022. Notice was posted on the official bulletin board of Rockaway Township. Agenda item number six, approval of minutes. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There is no minute.
Okay, that was easily done. Thank you. Moving on.
Take it back.
Sorry.
Agenda item number seven, open to the public. Okay, I'll remind anybody speaking, there is a three-minute time limit. Please state your name and address for the record, and as always, there's no, it's not a question-and-answer period. Pat Deggan.
You think I'm loud enough?
There you go.
There you go.
Pat Deggan, 88 Valleys U Drive. I have two thank yous I'd like to give you all tonight. First one is for the work that you, the council and the police department did on that intersection between White Meadow Mountain and Hibernia. Having that resident cut back, that amount of hedges has made such a big difference. I want to thank you for all your hard work on it. And the second thank you I have is for the senior picnic. It was a great afternoon. You guys worked really, really hard, and it was really nice to be served. Thank you.
Thank you. Eleanor Hoffman?
Eleanor Hoffman, 204 West Lakeshore Drive. I wrote it out because I want to be within the three minutes. Okay, I wanted to bring up a couple of things about the geese situation at Parks Lake. The first item, I watched the video of last month's council meeting where our mayor notes that his dog had gotten sick from the geese poop. I contacted a vet and I asked about it, and he said that the dog would have had to actually digest the feces to get sick. It's easy to blame the geese, but there is no proof that the dog caught that if it was a bacterial infection from them. It's really unfair and wrong in my eyes to do so, to blame these animals. Second, there are things that could be done now by Parks and Recreation to avoid the feces to be on the walking paths, for instance. Part of the job duties of this department is cleaning up the area, and I see that woman, Mary, sweeping up the walkways every day. I mean, she does a great job, but this should be incorporated in the daily upkeep by the department, both Rockaway Township and the borough. Third, a woman from Denville told me, it was like a month ago I saw this woman, and she told me like around five years ago they killed the geese that were at Indian Lake, and she said that they said that they would never do it again. Instead, they invested in a lighting system that greatly helped their geese situation. It helped them stay off the path, or for whatever reason. I'm not really familiar what it was, but I think it's worth our Park and Recreation Department to give them a call and see what the deal is about that, which can help. It helps them stay off the path. I just don't want this issue or the geese to die. Let's keep them both alive, the issue and these animals. It's, you know, it's interesting, if you Google Parks Lake, it has a picture showing all the beautiful area of the lake area, and one of those pictures is a picture of a goose. It's kind of ironic that we're killing them off. So I just want to keep, you know, like I said, the issue and the animals alive. We have the New Jersey Animal Protection League and many local supporters that are all ready to assist with this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Amber Lucitello, Lucitello. I apologize if I pronounced that wrong.
Okay, my name is Amber Lucitello. I live at 41 Meriden Road, and I want to address about the speeding that goes on on Meriden Road. It was okay until the bridge reopened. And like people like me and my husband, we walk our dogs. I always see an elderly man jogging every day, and I see people walking their kids and their babies. I think something should be done about it so no one gets hurt or worse dies. It's like, there's no sidewalks on Meriden Road.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? No, thanks. Moving on, agenda item number eight, ordinances for introduction, O-22-18, ordinance repealing prior ordinances concerning Bulbyville Sewer Project of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of Rockaway, County of Morris, State of New Jersey. Can I have a motion? I'll make that motion.
Second.
Clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Quinn?
I'll abstain.
Councilman Friedlander?
Yes.
Council, Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noon?
Yes.
Councilman Saulberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Wytovich?
Yes.
Vice President Sackett?
Yes.
President Kritz?
Yes, that's, eight yeses, one abstention. Motion carries. Agenda item 8B, O-22-19, ordinance providing for the purchase of information technology by the Township of Rockaway in the County of Morris, New Jersey, and appropriating $100,000, therefore, from the General Capital Fund. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Quinn?
Yes.
Councilman Friedlander?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noon?
Yes.
Councilman Saulberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Wytovich?
Yes.
Vice President Sackett?
Yes.
President Kritz?
Yes, that's nine yeses. Motion carries. Agenda item number nine, ordinances for public hearing or final adoption. A-0-2217, an ordinance amending Chapter 5, Article 5, entitled Peddlers, Canvassers, Solicitors, and Mobile Food Vendors of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of Rockaway, and particularly Sections 5-5.6D. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Is there any discussion amongst the council?
That's a good one.
Clerk, please take a roll. I'm sorry, if there's anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this. Clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Quinn?
Yes.
Councilman Friedlander?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noon?
Yes.
Councilman Saulberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Wytovich?
Yes.
Vice President Sackett?
Yes.
President Kritz?
Yes, that's nine yeses. Motion carries. Agenda item number 10, consent agenda, R-22-136, R-22-137, R-22-138, R-22-139, R-22-140, R-22-141, R-22-142, and R-22-143. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Quinn?
Yes.
Councilman Friedlander?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noon?
Yes.
Councilman Saulberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Wytovich?
Yes.
Vice President Sackett?
Yes.
President Kritz?
Yes, that's nine yeses. Motion carries. Agenda item number 11, appointments, council appointments for emergency medical services. Hartnett Tierra, EMS only. Michael Schutz, EMS only. Ciara Taggart, EMS only, transitioning from a junior to a regular member. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman Quinn?
Yes.
Councilman Friedlander?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noon?
Yes.
Councilman Saulberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Wytovich?
Yes.
Vice President Sackett?
Yes.
President Kritz?
Yes, that's nine yeses. Motion carries. Congratulations. Agenda item number 12, old business, new business, and reports. We are going to start with Councilman Wytovich.
I have nothing to report at this time.
Councilwoman Noon?
Uh, yeah, a few things. I attended the PAL dinner, the prime rib dinner. Prime rib dinner. It was very, very good. So if anybody ever gets a chance, it's fundraiser, and it was very, very good. Attended the pep rally, also very nice. Rockaway Township does a great job with it. Was in Morris Knolls High School and the gym this year, because Peterson Field isn't done yet. Attended the senior picnic, which, it was a great time and well-attended, and food was good. And I just wanted to also mention that Germania Park is having their Oktoberfest this weekend, September 17th and 18th. So if you get a chance, stop by there. That's always fun. And also, Germania Park does a dinner on Friday nights. So if you want an inexpensive dinner, you know, you can go there, you can get it to go. So they do a dinner every Friday night, and that's it.
Thank you. Councilman Brooks?
Thank you, Council President. I also attended the senior picnic, had a great time. Anytime you get a live band, that's, it's always a fun time, so. Especially when you know the singers, which is even better. Other than that, nothing else to report.
Thank you. Councilman Friedlander?
Okay, good. Quick, quick reports. Thank you. First, the library board, summer programs were a big success. If you want to follow any of the programs, go on their website. They're always constantly doing things. If you want to know about the Hibernia update, they're doing flooring, new flooring, and painting in there. So if you drive by and you see it closed, that's the reason. And before you know it, it'll be finished. So that's, that's a good thing. Substance Abuse Alliance, finally, with the new superintendent, they're all hands-on. We're going to be doing our Phase 4 programs again at Copeland this year. I'll keep you informed of that, because it's a very, very big year for the Alliance. It's going to be their 25th anniversary in Rockaway Township. So I'll keep you abreast of that. Historical Society, we finished the summer open houses, which we had Saturdays and Sundays periodically between the summer months. It is now closed. Hopefully soon through Connolly and Hicki, that's the historical architects. We got grant money, everybody knows, through the county. And some people were there looking at it, and hopefully when we're closed, they're going to start spending some of that money and putting in interior work, bathroom, plumbing, a little bit, so we can keep it going a little bit longer than the summer months. And again, like the Councilman, well, well, oh, it's like, Paul. Thank you. And the Mayor Noon, the senior picnic was a big success. Everybody was happy about it. Went to the football rally, and that was great, seeing the cheerleaders and all the young football players, since I only had daughters. So it's a, it was a good thing. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilman Quinn?
Thank you. Yes, the senior picnic was fantastic. Everybody enjoyed themselves, and I have to compliment Dial-A-Ride. They did a great job getting them there and getting them home. They all were very appreciative. They talked about it all week. The pep rally was fantastic. I'm very blessed that I have two granddaughters that are cheerleaders, so they were there and doing their thing. My youngest daughter is a coach, so I really enjoy it. My youngest grandson is a flag football player, so he was not in that group yet, but he was there looking and ready to go. Again, I attended the PAL Challenger fundraiser, and as Mary said, and everybody else that had attended, the food was amazing, and that's their big fundraiser for this group. They do a lot with it for the Challenger program. Let's see, what do I have left? Oh, planning board, we had a meeting last night. We approved over at Atlantic Health, they had to come before us, which I think was ridiculous, but they came before us because they had to move, they're putting solar panels in, and when they went to put in this one section of solar panels, there's electrical lines that were not marked out underneath, and so they can't put the panels on with the legs. So they had to move it. So they had to come before the entire board for us to give them the approval, which we did. We also gave the approval for the Party City building, which is empty, to be subdivided inside into two separate light industrial usage, and the kids, the daycare center will stay there. So that is being done with new trees and new signage. So that was on that. And the rec committee had a meeting. They are setting up for grievance hearing, and I'll give you more on that when that comes forward. And everybody is looking forward to Peterson Field this weekend. I know my grandkids are, especially the cheerleaders, so they'll stay off of the turf, but they will be on the grass. And that's my report. Thank you.
Councilman Friedlander, you forgot something?
I forgot something very important, and I apologize. I wanted to thank the entire council and the mayor. This is the first time in the history of the Historical Society that everyone on the council and the mayor's office are members. They all joined. These people just worked tirelessly to maintain the history in this town, and I want to thank every one of you for joining. That's, that's the one thing I wanted to say tonight, and I forgot about it. I apologize.
Councilwoman Brooks?
The senior picnic was excellent. I think we'd be remiss if we didn't acknowledge the ladies at Community Services, and Dave, and Brian, and Pat, and everyone who put in all the work behind the scenes, specifically Sue Gabe and all the ladies back there. Man, I got in my steps that day, but it was an awesome time. So I just want to thank everyone who put in the hard work prior. Secondly, a bunch of residents in Ward Sticks have reached out to me thanking me for lights on Green Pond Lot Road. So a lot of the streetlights have been out for long, and slowly but surely, they're all popping back on. So whatever power may be, and whoever's working hard noting down the numbers, we appreciate it, because it gets pretty dark sometimes down Green Pond, especially after nine or so in the fall and the winter. I have also been receiving a lot of complaints about garbage trucks. I don't know specifically which companies, who they are, but they're driving very fast on the street. Some of them are coming during bus pickup times. Some of them are driving in reverse. So in the past couple of weeks, a bunch of the parents have stopped me while I'm walking my dog to let me know that a lot of the out-of-service garbage trucks, they said they were not town recycling trucks, so that was great to hear, but they are complaints about the garbage service. So I don't know if there's anything we can do at the township and to maybe contact some of these providers and tell them to slow it down. And last but not least, my PSA, school is in session, the kids are at the bus stops. Make sure you give yourself a good extra 10 to 15 minutes if you're leaving for work, because those school buses are rolling and they stop. That means we all stop. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Saulberg?
Great, thank you. Very quiet on the Board of Commissioners front. Last two meetings, no particular references to Rockaway Township, but the Commissioners did hold their 9/11 memorial at the Morris County Memorial Park. I was able to attend that, and it was a very fitting and somber memorial. Yeah, memorial for 9/11, had a lot of dignitaries there. Representative Sheryl was there, as long as, of course, a lot of local dignitaries. Really recommend, regardless of the day, regardless of the time of year, I recommend going up to Memorial Park just to reflect, you know, pay your respects. It really is a real tribute to the tragedy of 9/11. I just wanted to, I just really thank and recognize everybody involved in the pep rally, the parents, the kids, the coaches, really the size and scope of it, the participation in our town really is just wonderful to see, and it's great to see that much energy and participation. So just want to thank, you know, each and every one for putting on such a great rally. Other thing, September 24th, that's a Saturday, the Holy Trinity Lutheran Church is going to be holding a Fall Festival and Car Show. Again, that's a Saturday from 12 to 5. It was a really nice last year, had some, had some booths, had some nice, had some really nice cars, take a look at music. So rain or shine, recommend to, you know, see if you can make it there. That's all I have.
Thank you. Council President?
Thank you, Council President. Myself and Councilman Friedlander had attended the Whitewell Lake POA budget meeting back on the 17th, and pretty interesting what goes on that meeting, going through everything, and a lot of residents were there, and I know they have a few more coming up this month. And, you know, they spent a lot of time, those are all volunteers, so they work really hard. So really good job by the POA on that. Pep rally, attended that. They were pretty much, most of the people from the council, the mayor were there. Very good pep rally. I got a couple of calls after from a few of my friends who grew up in Rockaway, wondering if you could bring back the, they used to do a good bonfire. So back in the 90s, so said, I would pass the word, pass the word around, maybe if we get back outside, we get a good bonfire going. And senior picnic was well-run. Everyone was working really hard that day. The seniors really seemed to enjoy the day. It's just a really nice day. The band was good, a lot of good prizes to give out. So the committee, I took care of that, did an excellent job with that as well. And school is back. Everything's kicking into high gear, Rockets. I was right before here, I was at a Morris Hills soccer game. And, you know, if you don't, don't attend any sporting events, it's good to try to get to one once in a while. Try, try different stuff, see different stuff, see a lot of kids from town, and they really appreciate when they see other people come and check them out. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks. For my report, I want to, again, publicly thank Ms. Seeger, Mr. Dyer, and, you know, I don't want to be remiss and forget anybody, the work that's going on at Peterson. I've been working with them very closely. It's just, you know, the scope is just unreal. I mean, between, you know, Ms. Frante and Dave Swanton, the, the work that, if people really understood the amount of work that's going on down there, it's, it's amazing. So we went from thinking, you know, November, obviously, for the turf, well, the Rockets are going to have their first home game on the grass this weekend. And if, you know, we would have asked them, and I think we actually did ask, the Rockets did ask to do that, and, you know, when they got done laughing, they said, there's no way we can do that. I've been in a lot of contact with Mr. Swanton this week, just trying to get, you know, the booth ready, and, you know, it's just a tremendous, tremendous amount of work. You could just see, you know, the heart and soul going into it. So I just wanted to say thank you. You know, we do understand how, what it really takes to get that done. I had a chance to attend my first picnic last week. The last two years, I think it got moved because of weather, and then I couldn't make the new date. I was a little upset they asked to come to the picnic. I didn't know that I was going to be running all day for a couple hours at the picnic. Completely did not sell that the right way, so now I'm going to stand for next year.
We sold it exactly.
Yeah. So, but it was ama, I've heard about it, but it was, just to be a part of it was, you know, really, it was just a good, good experience. So again, thank you to everybody that put that on. The Morris Knolls girls volleyball team have a fundraiser this Sunday. It's a $10 breakfast at Applebee's, if there's any council members that would like to attend. Thank you, Ms. Noon, for already purchasing a ticket. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for purchasing ticket, tickets. We'll see you there if anybody wishes to join. That's the Sunday at 8:00. And that is all I have. Mr. Yachafana?
Thank you, Council President. The first thing I'd like to announce, that there's going to be a mandatory attendance seminar for the council, going to be conducted by Councilman Wytovich and myself, and the subject is the pronunciation of acting names. I want to report to the council as briefly as possible of something that I've been discussing with the council for quite some time, and that were, those are the two lawsuits that Mr. Tucker Kelly filed against former Mayor Fusio and current Mayor Jackson in his then capacity as council president. You'll be familiar with some of the things that were alleged in that lawsuit, including the breach of civil rights, the alleged inability of the council to censure a member of the council for their conduct during council meetings, the alleged inability of a member of the council to, during a council meeting, speak as a member of the public, and things of that nature. I'm very pleased to report to the council that the last of those lawsuits, which was the lawsuit against Mayor Jackson, and of course, the township, has been dismissed by the court. They have both been dismissed. What I think it's important for the council to understand is that not only were these cases dismissed, they were dismissed without even reaching hearing, okay? Essentially, the court, and we're talking about two separate judges, because one of the cases was hired, handled by our assignment judge, Judge Makowitz. The other was handled by Judge Bogart, who also sits in Morris Town. Both of the judges independently reached the conclusion that all of Mr. Kelly's allegations in both lawsuits were factually and legally baseless. So once again, the township has unfortunately been put through the time and cost of defending two major pieces of litigation where Mr. Kelly saw damages against the town. They're over, and that's a fair comment on their validity and the motivation, unfortunately, behind them. But I think it's important the council hear that. Other than that, I hope every member of the council had a good summer, and I promise if it gets a little chillier, I'll go back to the ties and the coats and all that stuff.
We're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, a couple of things. Before I get into the, Ms. Hoffman, I just want to, I'm not going to belabor it. I don't say things to make things up. Three years ago, we took our Great Dane for a walk at Parks Lake. There's goose feces everywhere at that time. The woman wasn't cleaning the pathway. He definitely stepped in some. The next three days, he had gastrointestinal problems. We took him to the vet. The vet said, did he, you know, what happened? We told him what we had done with him. He said he probably licked his paws and ingested some of the feces, and that's what caused it. That's why I told the story. So I didn't make anything up. And if you're a vet, that would go along with what you said, with your vet saying he would have to ingest it. With that said, I'll go into my report. So a few things. We finally got, Brian Coward led this. So all new residents to Rockaway are going to start getting this card, welcoming them to town. We're going to send them out to people who recently moved here. It talks about Rockaway Township a little bit. It's got a link to our website, and it's got a link, or it shows where to go to go to our website and where to go to sign up for Facebook. So I think it's pretty cool. So when, you know, they move to town and we have, we find out, they'll get one of these postcards. Next, in along, in alliance with, you know, my continued support, our continued support to recognize local businesses, we are going to highlight KB Plumbing and Heating. They provide top-quality plumbing and heating for commercial, residential, and new construction throughout New Jersey. Fourth-generation owner Ken Walter is a licensed master plumber to stay in New Jersey over 30 years of experience. KB has the knowledge and expertise to take on any plumbing or heating project in new construction or renovation. Many of you probably know Ken. He is a resident of Rockaway Township for I think most of his life. 2022 marks his 30th year volunteer coaching sports programs. He used to run the Rockets. I think he's also coached lacrosse. Unfortunately, he coaches lacrosse like a football player. Please visit our Facebook page and there'll be a link to his website and it'll also, you know, give information about him. So KB Plumbing and Heating. Couple of things since the last council meeting, I think this happened after the last council meeting. So we had the employee appreciation barbecue Friday, August 12th, which was nice. A bunch of council members came. We cooked for the employees. Myself and all the council members contributed to buying burgers and dogs and everybody chipped in and brought stuff in. It was very nice. It's nice to be able to recognize the employees. You know, we had DPW workers rotating in. Police came up and ate also, so it was very nice. Then I also attended a meeting at Germania Park and Councilman Newman mentioned about Friday nights. Actually, my wife and I were talking about Friday, maybe getting our dinner from there. On the 14th, actually, I visited the Face House, my wife and I. Saw Mr. Friedlander there, got to learn a lot of history. We've been there before, but just to talk to some of the volunteers and all the work that goes on there. And the history is crazy. Like I planned on going there for like 10 minutes and I think we stayed probably close to an hour because we just couldn't hear enough of, you know, everything. It just sucks in. Yeah. So, and then we went to the Parks Lake gazebo concert that day and it was phenomenal. Miss Sweet, it was, we had such a good time. There were so many people there. People getting up and dancing. So anybody, I would highly recommend next year, I know we're going to have again next year, that you try to make a few of them. I mean, the band was, I forget which band it was. I forget the name. It was. Yeah, I know. You were in Alaska. The one time I go, you're in Alaska. So, but they were great. I would highly recommend you go. We also had Mr. Dyer help coordinate on August 21st, the Medical Support Unit Picnic. So the Medical Support Unit from Pikatini, we hosted them at Mount Hope Pond and they went there for the afternoon. Councilman Friedlander, Brooks, and I think Mary, you were there too. Did you stop? I can't remember. No. And it was really nice, right? So they brought their whole medical unit. It's a medical support unit. So I don't even know. Yeah, with their families. So there were a lot of people there. And I think they were, Rachel said they were there like all day, right? I mean, yeah. And they seemed to have a blast. Their commander came and all that. So we're going to look at, you know, next year possibly doing, you know, see if we get more units from Pikatini to come and enjoy, you know, what we have to offer. On the 27th, my wife and I went up to the cornhole tournament at Telemark. And that was some serious stuff going on there. We thought about signing up, but when we saw them tape measuring the distance between the boards, we're like, I think we're going to, there were people practicing for like an hour. So it was serious stuff. I wasn't going to do that. And had a wedding that day. It was nice. Rockets pep rally. Tim Fortune runs the Rockets now, did a great job, the head of the boosters. Christine, I can't remember her last name. What was it? Bray, yeah. Did a phenomenal job. I can't say enough about the cheerleaders. Like my wife and I have been involved in the Rockets a long time. From the bottom to the top, every program was incredible. I want to say the younger ones, like pre-clinic, were doing back cartwheel. I don't even know what you call it, but I couldn't believe they could do it at that age. And I would like to point out, they raised an incredible amount of money in the 50/50 and I'm pretty sure every council member there had tickets to the 50/50. So none of them were able to pull the ticket because it would have been kind of weird if they pulled and their name came up. But yeah, it was really good fundraiser. They raised a bunch of money. The next day was the mayor's trophy game where the Rockets defended. Varsity beat the Junior Knights. It was a really nice event. They had some speakers and all that. Mr. Councilman Quinn talked about the CRC meeting. The Senior Picnic, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about Allison Lombardo and Sue Gabe, who really did the lion's share of the work and the coordination. Anybody who knows me knows I have high expectations for what you do. And I think I put a lot of pressure on both of them and, well, I know I did. And they did a great job and I can't say enough for what they did. You know, everybody, you know, Parks and Rec, Dave Swanton's guys are up there. Like, you know, the place before the picnic, they had to do so much cleanup and all that. Veronica getting the buses up there, like Jack mentioned. Like it's a true team effort, but it started, you know, it starts in the middle with Allison and Sue and organizing everything. I don't think people, you know, getting the school buses from the township to get some seniors up there. There's just so many complaints that the police were out there. So just a great job and thanks to all the council members for coming. The next I actually had off and came in Town Hall, had a meeting. Pat and I met with the property manager over at Pond View. Were exploring opportunities for police presence there with them. They're in the process of finalizing the firehouse.
Yep, the firehouse to be opened.
So, and I think they did something to help with the police signal over there. I'm not positive.
The antenna.
They put up an antenna. So we're trying to work with them. I think they're kind of outside of our Rockaway Township community and try and bring them more into the community and figure out ways we can do that. That night went to Jack Elko's 50th Year of Service Celebration, which is crazy. I think there were, what were there, three or four other, four other members of the fire department that have 50 years of service. So pretty incredible stuff. On the 10th, White Metal Lake Temple had their 70-year anniversary party. Rabbi Popki did a great job. They actually recognized three longtime members, Joel Goldman, Sheldon Kirsch and Harvey Pfizer. And it was a really nice service followed by a delicious kittish. All right, there we go. Right? Nice kittish. Really good. Town Square Village had a really cool Fall Festival. It's nice to see, like we went up to the Telemark cornhole thing. You know, Town Square Village has a Fall Festival. So like all of our communities are doing things together. People getting out and we noticed people introducing themselves at a table. They probably live next door to each other, no talk. So I think it's great that in our community, we're trying to do more things like that. The PAL Prime Rib Dinner, be remiss to two things. Number one, former Mayor Fuzio did a lot of the cooking. So I think he was involved with a bunch of the cooking of the prime rib. And I saw Sean Connolly there. And I just wanted to mention, for those of you who don't know Sean, Sean is a longtime Rockets coach, but he's also a coach for the Challenger Program. And that guy has dedicated thousands of hours of his time with no kids. His kids are grown and gone for a while. Coach of football, coaching lacrosse, coaching Challenger. He's a member of the CRC. He's a Rutgers instructor. He gives so much to this community and seeing him that night just made me think that I wanted to say something about him and what he does. And Jack mentioned we had the Planning Board meeting last night. That, woo, that was long. That was a tough one. But anyway, again, thanks everybody for your participation in the Senior Picnic and all. Have a good night.
Ms. Seeger?
And Happy New Year, Manny. Little scotch me here. To my Jewish friends, Happy New Year.
25th, Happy New Year, Mr. Sean. There you go.
I'm getting coached here. I'm sorry.
I promise. I just want to let you know, believe it or not, you should have all gotten a notice that we're starting preparation for the 2023 budget. Might be a little challenging this year with our economy, but I know the departments will do a great job. We set up the meetings for November with the department heads and then next year we'll go over the budget with you. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Coward?
Thank you. Just on the Face House, the morning of the Senior Picnic, we did have the opening for Phase Five of the Ford Face House. And there will be a resolution on the meeting for the 29th. The numbers did come in a little bit high. We're still waiting on review from the architect to see where we're at on that project. But just to, you can look out for that on the next meeting. That's all I have.
Ms. Frante, welcome back.
Thank you. Yes, no report. Just excited to be back and looking forward to working with each of you.
Mr. Dyer? Just real quick, next Tuesday, the 20th, the Morris County Clerk's Office will be here for passports and notary. So mark your calendar if friends, family want to come get their passports. Will be in this room here. That's the 20th next Tuesday. And then we're also partnering again with the Borough for Dark Lake. That's going to be the 29th. More details to come. October, that's a Saturday. And then we're also, Brian, myself and Sue Gabe are working on putting together a ribbon cutting for Peterson.
What?
In the coming weeks. So that'd be, that's all I have. Thank you. Mr. Knott?
Just want to report that we will be doing micro paving this Thursday and Friday. The towns are listed on the website, starting with Edwin and then on to Barrisford. Yeah, the streets. Rabbit Run, Deer Run. On Thursday, it will be Edwin Street, Barrisford, Rabbit Run and Deer Run. And then Day Two will be Friday. Edwin will be top coded. Barrisford will be top coded and on to Chandler Terrace and Darlington Drive. That's all I have.
Thanks. Chief?
I'll make it quick. On September 1st, we celebrated the retirement of Lieutenant Chris Tom and Officer John Riley with their 25 years of dedicated service. We had to walk out here and it's well attended. Don't forget, school's open, so we want you to drive carefully later this month. There's going to be National School Bus Passing Enforcement Week. So we'll be out looking for you. Hopefully, we will not see anyone passing at the school buses, but if they do, we will take the appropriate action. With the Jewish holidays coming up, I've been in touch with our rabbis and their security teams. We're working with them to see if there's any specific concerns that they have. There are no credible threats at this time, but I spoke to them. They're going to be meeting with me and this way we'll address both the fiscal security of the synagogues as well as increasing the patrols around the areas. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
So.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Very much.
Yes.
I've been on Facebook.